I'd like to call to order our meeting of December ninth, 2015. And our first item is roll call vote, excuse me, not vote, roll call. And Kim, everyone's present except Mrs. Burns, who's not feeling well tonight. Okay, and would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Sorry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next item of business will be the consent agenda. There are seven items for consideration. And I'll take, we're going to do the first two separately, which are donations. And an anonymous Wilmington, this is really very nice. An anonymous Wilmington High School parent donated a check in the amount of $2,500 to fund Jeff Allison's presentation for the pre-prom assembly on March 22nd, 2016. Per school committee policy, donations in excess of $500 must be accepted by the committee. So I'd accept a motion to accept the donation for the amount of $2,500. Mrs. Carroll?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, Mrs. Bonnich. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous, Kim. And the second one is Cummings Property has donated $1,000 to the Shoshine Elementary School. The funds can be used towards items for classrooms, technologies, et cetera. Per school committee policy, donations in excess of $500 must be accepted by the committee. So the recommended motion, we move to accept the Cummings Properties donation in the amount of $1,000. Mr. Mullis.
I move to approve donation for Cummings Property for $1,000.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Bjork. All those in favor? Thank you. Unanimous, Kim. Next, we have the approval of the minutes of November 18th, 2015, regular session. Approval of warrants L-17, L-18, L-19, L-20, and L-21. Approval of warrants CB-04 and of warrants sped '07. Mrs. Bresad?
So moved.
Do we have a second? Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And then we have our last set of the payroll warrant of 11/25/2015. Mr. Bjork.
So moved.
Second, Mrs. Bonnich. All those in favor? Okay. One, two, three, four. Four in favor, Kim, and two abstain. Mrs. Carroll and Mrs. Kane. Thank you. All right. Our next item of business is the, we don't have one? Yes. Yeah, I do. Okay, thank you. Our student representative, not tonight, it looks like, no? Okay. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yes. Thank you. Mrs. Kane, I just have a few things I wanted to update the committee on. First of all, the Wilmington Middle School has made its nomination for our annual ambassador for the project, for Project 351. If you recall, Project 351 is basically a youth service organization that's dedicated to building unity and leadership through year-long engagement and enrichment of an eighth-grade service ambassador from every city and town in Massachusetts, hence the 351, Project 351. So youth are selected for exemplary ethic of service and the values of kindness, compassion, humility, and gratitude. The representative this year from Wilmington Middle School, we're pleased to announce, is Maeve Catigan. And she is an eighth-grade student at the Wilmington Middle School. So we congratulate her and look forward to hearing more about her participation in Project 351. Last month, we held our first of what we hope to be many superintendent forums. These are forums intended for Wilmington public school staff to come and have dialogue about topics of interest and importance to our staff here in Wilmington public schools. And that was on the topic of assessment. We had a number of very engaged participants in those discussions. We did one for the secondary level, one for the elementary level, and very helpful to our process in terms of thinking about assessment and our assessment strategy moving forward. The second set of superintendent forums are scheduled to take place in the next couple of weeks. The first one is actually tomorrow. And there are a set of them conducting at multiple schools. And it's on the discussion of the FY 2017 budget. So it gives them the opportunity to learn about the budget process, learn about our preliminary budget, our budget priorities, and have some opportunity for some discussion and input on our budget priorities with the staff. So hopefully get some good turnout for those. We're sending a team of four staff members next week to the school, annual school climate conference. And this climate, this particular conference is on social emotional learning in action. So it's very timely for us here. And we have a team of four, as I said, going to that conference. And I'll actually be joining this team of four for the conference that takes place at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. So looking forward to that. In terms of big news, other big news, and it's going to take us quite some time to sort through it all and talk about the implications of it. But as you may have heard today, the Senate passed the ESEA reauthorization bill, also known as Every Student Succeeds Act. It was passed by the House last week on Wednesday. The President is expected to sign it. It has some pretty sweeping changes, most notably the end of what we've known as the federal accountability system in returns, control over standards and assessments to states and local districts. There's a lot of speculation that in Massachusetts they will continue to use the similar system to what they've used and applied for when they originally applied for their NCLB waiver. It does still require that there be assessments for grades three through eight students in reading and mathematics, and that we disaggregate the data to look at the performance of our subgroups and to really identify persistent, underachieving groups of students. The other big change is a fairly significant downsizing of the Federal Department of Education. So it'll be quite some time. But already, we're seeing a lot of information being pushed out from various levels about what some of the implications are. But we'll have more discussions about that as we learn more, as will. I'm sure you'll be getting lots of information from MASCE, as I will be getting from MASSS as well, on the implications for this rather significant change at the federal level, when and if it's signed into law by the President. And finally, just some dates to update you on upcoming events. We're entering our holiday season, which is always a busy time with respect to concerts and the like. Tomorrow night, there will be the band concert, combined high school, middle school band concert. That's here at the high school auditorium at 7:00 PM. Next week, on the 15th, which is Tuesday, the elementary band accompanied by the West Chorus will be performing also here at the high school auditorium at 7:00 PM. And then on Thursday, the 17th, the middle school chorus will be performing here at the auditorium at 7:00 PM. And I'm sure our students are very well aware of this date. But as you know, our school vacation week begins on December 24th and extends through January 1st. We return to school on Monday, January 4th. And not long after that, on January 20, excuse me, January 12th, we have the high school and grade eight chorus concert. And that's also at the auditorium at 7:00.
That's it? All right, good. Thank you. Any questions, right? Okay. We have no old business. So under new business, we have our first Narcan presentation.
Yes, and I would like to introduce, she's here with us, Doreen Crowe. You all know, she's our Director of Health Services. She's going to present to you the plan that she has put together with her school nurse staff, staff on the administration of Narcan in our schools. So I will turn that over to Mrs. Crowe.
So thank you. Yeah, I do want to recognize that Mrs. Bonnich is one of our school nurses. So we're going to talk about Narcan in schools. And Narcan is the primary drug that's used in a lot of, you know, Narcan is easier to say. And so you're having users which returns. So as you know, and have heard, I'm sure, in the media, the opioid epidemic is a growing epidemic in the United States. And so we're going to talk about the problem, the use of Narcan in schools. And that's it. So what is the problem? The problem is that opioid overdoses are the leading cause of death in the United States. In looking at the Massachusetts data, over the past four years, the number of fatal opioid overdoses has doubled. New England in particular was identified as having a significantly large percentage of people using heroin and abusing pharmaceuticals compared to the national average. The county with the highest rates of death is Middlesex County. Opioid addiction has been recognized as a problem. But the good news is that treatment is also available, and that has also increased. In 2014, when the Massachusetts Department of Public Health recognized the significant rise in data, Governor Patrick, at the time, issued a public health state of emergency allowing first responders, your police and fire departments, to carry and administer Narcan. Narcan is a form of harm reduction to prevent people from dying from an overdose. The goal is to save a life and get the person into treatment afterwards. And to date, there have been more than 3,000 reported documented overdose rescues in Massachusetts. Opioids are heroin and other prescription medications such as codeine, morphine, oxycodone, and methadone. They're very strong medications that relieve pain. They, the way they work is they attach to the opioid receptors in the brain, reduce the intensity of brain signals reaching the brain, pain signals, I'm sorry. An overdose occurs when there's too much opioid in the system. Opioids block the receptors that control breathing that results in respiratory failure, cardiac failure, and then death. There are many risk factors that can contribute to an overdose. It's not just using the opioids. Sometimes it's using a combination of other sedating substances or using other household members' medications, prescription opioids. So Narcan acts very dramatically. It allows slow or absent breathing to resume. It's safe, it's effective, it has no potential for abuse. It's been used by paramedics, hospitals, emergency rooms for many decades. And it's just now being made available to the public. How it works? Narcan knocks the opioid off the receptor in the brain and restores breathing. It acts very quickly, in one to three minutes, to reverse the overdose. It is the only effective medication to reverse an opioid overdose. Death following an opioid overdose is preventable if the person receives basic life support and timely administration of the opioid antagonist Narcan. The use of Narcan in schools is fairly new. It is supported by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Center for Disease Control, and SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and also the National Association of School Nurses. Narcan, along with epi pens and AEDs, is a tool for saving lives. Massachusetts Department of Public Health now collects data from the Essential School Health Service Grant Recipient School Districts, which we're one of those, on the number of Narcan administrations by school nurses now. And that data is included in monthly reports that we send to the state. According to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, currently, more than 75 school districts in Massachusetts have Narcan available in the school nurses' offices. Other reasons for stocking Narcan? It has no street value, it does not create a high, it does not have any major side effects. It will only be administered by trained school nurses and substitute school nurses. And we would use the train-the-trainer model. It's administered via the nostril, so there's no risk of needle stick or concern for disposing. Most common question people have is about liability. The Good Samaritan laws provide protection for the use of Narcan in schools. Narcan, as I said, is available to the public now. It's meant to be used by laypeople, such as friends and family, who now carry it, so they can save a loved one's life. The school district's medication policy covers the use of Narcan in schools, and standing orders by the school physician are needed in a similar way to the anaphylaxis protocol that we have for epinephrine. The cost is about $20 to $60 a dose, and I think it's gone up with the high demand. But I do know that the first responders can take advantage of the discounted rate that the Department of Public Health is offering right now. Training is free, and we use the train-the-trainer model. And the Narcan trainers are provided by the state, and those are free as well. And so I would conclude by saying that, you know, we know there's an opioid problem. It's clearly a health crisis. We, just like having epinephrine on hand and AEDs in our schools, hope that we never have to use it, Narcan. But we'll feel confident that we have it available if we need to. That's it.
Just to follow up to, because it's already covered within the medication policy that you already have, there's technically, obviously, no vote required for them to, but because it is, you know, somewhat of a high-profile issue, we just wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity, A, to be aware that this was the plan to happen. And I commend the nurses. A lot of places kind of sit back and wait. But the nurses here were very proactive in approaching me because they really wanted to be able to have this tool amongst the many tools that they have to be able to address life-threatening issues. But certainly wanted to provide you the opportunity to ask any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Bonnich.
Is part of the training, do you, have you had the training? Or do you know a lot of, okay. Is part of it being able, allowing the people to recognize whether it is an overdose, like?
Yes, absolutely. I've already been trained. And Kim Donovan's also been trained. And yes, that's definitely part of the training, recognizing the difference between whether it could be an overdose or something else.
And if it is, if you think it is, and you administer it, but that's not what it was, it's not dangerous at all?
It wouldn't be harmful.
And you would always call 911?
Yeah.
Just like if you used any medication in the school setting? So if you thought, if you said, this person isn't breathing, you know, and whether you knew their history, or you saw pills next to them, or something like that, and you administered it, like Doreen said, it's only used against opioids. So if someone took a bunch of Valium, which is a barbiturate, and they had the same symptoms because they weren't breathing well, and they were respiratory distressed, and you gave them Narcan, it's not going to do anything because it only takes off the opioid, not the barbiturate. But what you would do is you would administer it, and you would call 911. And when they came, you could say, it hasn't changed, whether you needed to do rescue breathing, and it's not going to harm them in any way. If you give it to someone, and they don't need it, it doesn't do anything.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Mr. Mullis? Do we know, you talked about Middlesex being a high-risk area. Do we know if there have been any overdoses in schools in Middlesex or Massachusetts, for that matter? I'm just curious.
I don't have that information. I could certainly find that out for you.
And then the other question I had, and I don't know if anyone knows the answer, is do we know if Wilmington Police carries Narcan as part of their?
So the Wilmington Fire Department does. The Wilmington Police Department is planning to. But for them, they are basically bargaining with their unions over that as a change in working conditions. But that's the intent, that the SROs and the police would carry that in their vehicles.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'd just like to take this opportunity while you're here to thank you. You have been in the forefront for us these, all the time that you've been here and that I've been here. And I'm just so impressed, whenever anything new is coming down the pike, you look into it, you take the training, you do what you need to do, and you bring it forward to the school department. And you've been such a nurse leader. Certainly covers what you've done for us. And I want to take the opportunity to thank you. And I'm sure we all feel the same way that, Doreen, you've done such a great job. We really appreciate it. And you have a wonderful staff. And we appreciate all your efforts and your staff's efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's why I love working for her.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Doreen.
Okay. Our next item of business will be elementary literacy.
And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Burnham to introduce our literacy coach.
Who's going to be presenting? Holly Banishewitz. So as you know, Holly Banishewitz is our new pre-K5 literacy coach and has been an integral part of the district's literacy plan committee. And in the audience tonight, we have many members of the literacy plan committee. And I want to take a moment to thank them all for being here to support Holly's presentation on this very important work. Tonight is really to give you some background information for the work that we've been doing and the direction that we're heading. As you know, there are several items in the budget and the capital plan that tie to this work. So this hopefully will give you some good background information on where we're going. So I'll turn it over to Holly.
Great. Well, thank you for having me. And so I'm going to talk to you a little bit tonight about balanced literacy and the workshop model. And like Kate said, we have a district literacy plan committee, and several members are here this evening. And we've been working together for a couple of years now, really coming up with a district literacy plan of where we see literacy being in the next three to five years. And within the district literacy plan, we have an action plan where we want to be in year one, year two, and all the way to year five. And everyone on the committee agreed that balanced literacy was essential to the plan, that we incorporate those elements into our daily instruction. So what is balanced literacy? Balanced literacy is a methodology that integrates various modalities of literacy instruction, including interactive read-aloud, shared reading, guided reading, independent reading, word study, interactive writing, shared writing, guided writing, and independent writing. And these areas can best be addressed through the workshop model. And at the heart of balanced literacy is assessment-based planning, explicit skill instruction, the use of authentic texts and experiences related to literacy, and the gradual release from, shifted from the teacher to the student so that we're really creating independent readers and writers. I included this chart to show just how highly complex the reading process is. These are all of the systems of strategic actions that readers must control simultaneously in order to be successful with reading. And these are the things you and I control automatically. But our students need to be taught how to do this. And good readers use all of these when they're processing texts. And it's really our job to get students to a place where they're using all of these systems of strategic actions independently. And the best way to do this is by using the balanced literacy approach within the reader's-writer's workshop model. You know, balanced literacy really promotes giving students an authentic experience within the four walls of our classroom. We want our students to experience literacy, reading, and writing, as they would in the real world. So we want to bring that into our classrooms. And we want it to be a laboratory where students are reading and writing and just being busily engaged and learning to love reading and writing. And really, this is exactly what the Common Core wants our students to be. They want them to be college and career-ready. And so by building this independence and providing an authentic experience within the classroom, we're really preparing our students just for that. There are several components to balanced literacy. And the first one is an interactive read-aloud. And this is where the teacher reads aloud to the students and engages them in accountable talk. Students are really learning how to talk about text. And this really supports the speaking and listening standards of the frameworks. And students are being exposed to material that are maybe, perhaps is more complex than their actual ability to read is. And there's also shared reading. And this is typically done in K-1. And this is where the teacher has a big book or a large poem, and the teacher is supporting the students in reading that piece and teaching them an explicit skill. There's also guided reading. Guided reading is where students are grouped by their instructional reading level, and the teacher pulls small groups of students and works with them at their instructional level, with leveled material. And the teacher explicitly teach, teaches those students exactly what they need to know to become more successful readers. We also have independent reading. And independent reading is a time for students to make their own book choices. And sometimes that's supported by the teacher to help them make appropriate book choices. And this really allows students time to practice the strategies and skills that have been taught to them by the teacher. And we know that Richard Allington, for example, who is a leading expert in the literacy field, he says that extensive reading is critical to the development of reading proficiency. And his research also shows that sheer volume of reading was a distinguishing factor in high-achieving classrooms. And it is important that we provide this time for our students. The more they read, the stronger they'll be. Finally, in the reading component of balanced literacy is word study. Providing students with a systematic approach to phonics study is important. And right now, in first grade, we have foundations. And we are looking to have foundations next year in all of second grade and kindergarten. And this year, teachers in first grade are seeing a significant difference in what first graders know this year as compared to last year. And also, they have unit assessments at the end of each unit. And the students overwhelmingly are meeting those benchmarks. And foundations is seeming to be very effective for our students. For writing in balanced literacy, we have shared writing. And this is where the students and the teacher compose a written piece together. And the teacher mainly does the writing while students contribute to the story. And interactive writing is very similar, with one exception, that the students are invited up to contribute to the actual piece of writing, maybe by adding a word or some punctuation. There's also guided writing, where the teacher would pull a small group of students and specifically work on skills that that group needed to help them become stronger writers. And then there's also independent writing. Just like in reading, our writers need extensive time to write, to really learn their craft and practice their craft. So all of these components of balanced literacy, we know that they're best practiced. But how do we incorporate that into our classrooms? And one of the best ways to do that is through the workshop model. The workshop model is driven by the standards. It's focused on strategies. The instruction is differentiated throughout the entire workshop model. And there, the instruction is guided by student data. The workshop model is not curriculum, but rather a model of instruction that includes best practices for literacy instruction. And differentiated instruction is embedded throughout the entire workshop. And also, direct and explicit instruction is given during each portion of the workshop. And I'm going to go through those portions in just a moment. The model also allows for us to use supporting materials and curriculum that best serve our students, such as foundations, or including Lucy Cockens Units of Study for Reading. And students within the workshop model are also exposed to texts of varying complexity that span all genres and content areas. So in Reader's Workshop, students have time to read Just Write books independently every day. They select their own appropriate books, although sometimes that needs to be guided. They are respecting each other's reading time. And they're really not just reading the words, but truly understanding what they are reading. And again, this experience reflects what students would do outside of the four walls of the classroom. So the components of the Reader's Workshop framework, the lesson within a Reader's Workshop framework would start with the focus lesson. And this is explicit instruction given to the whole class. And it's a 10 to 15-minute lesson. And there is a strategy or skill that is taught to the class. And these skills and strategies align with the mass frameworks. And then from the focus lesson, students move into independent reading and work. And during this time, most students are doing independent reading. There could be one-to-one conferences happening with the teacher and one student. And this is where the teacher is really listening to the student, figuring, assessing the student, figuring out what their needs are as a reader in that moment, and explicitly teaching them what they need to know and telling them what they're doing really well as readers as well. Also, we have small group lessons happening during this time. And that can be in two different forms, guided reading, which I already explained with leveled material, or strategy groups. And a strategy group is when you have students in your class and you're noticing some trends. And perhaps you notice that fluency amongst five students seems to be a point of struggle. So you're going to pull them together and teach them how to sound more fluent as readers. Finally, you bring the class back together after the independent reading and you do a group share. And students are, or the teacher shares when, how students incorporated the teaching point from the focus lesson. And also, she revisits the teaching point from that focus lesson. There is also time for phonics and word study. And again, this would be with explicit systematic phonics instruction like foundations. In the writers workshop, writers are encouraged to build independence. There's a high degree of choice. They can self-select topics or sometimes the teacher provides topics. There's lots of scaffolding from the teacher. There's frequent response to their writing. The instruction is direct and explicit. And it's differentiated through the whole class, small group, and individual lessons. And children are exposed to literature during this time so that they can really see good models of writing. And it helps them hone in on their craft of writing. The components of the writers workshop are essentially the same as readers workshop. There's the focus lesson where explicit skills are taught. And then during independent writing, there's conferencing, group lessons, and independent writing. And then a group share at the end. And there's also time for an interactive read aloud. And this is where the teacher again reads aloud to students, really building that accountable talk with them so that students, when they're working together, whether it's doing a peer review on writing, that they can talk intelligently and respectfully about that writing. And the same in reading, when they're doing, working together on a book, they can have that accountable talk without the teacher present because they have been taught that during the interactive read aloud. So the research shows that a student who cannot read on grade level by grade three is four times less likely to graduate by age 19 than a child who does read proficiently by that time. Also, elements of balanced literacy program that are delivered by effective teachers is linked to high reading achievement. And we know that teacher training is at the heart of this, being effective. Literacy is one of the most important things that we need to teach our students. We know that to be successful with math, science, social studies, any subject area, they need to be strong readers and writers. And we also know that we need to have sustained, high-quality professional development for our teachers because that will make the most impact in terms of student outcomes. And when implemented well, balanced literacy does more to meet the needs of all readers and writers because teachers utilize ongoing assessment data to establish groups, adjust whole class lessons, and adjust all instruction within the framework. But again, we must have that adequate teacher training. We are not adopting a new curriculum. Instead, we are moving toward a new model of instruction that requires significant support so that our teachers can be highly effective and impact student achievement. Teachers will need job-embedded coaching and training in order to make this shift. And it's really critical that we have this training. So that is the end, if anyone has any questions.
Does anyone have any, any questions? I have some questions.
Sure, please.
I have a couple of questions. I have my master's degree in reading. And it was, of course, it's years, it's years ago. But things don't change. Lucy Calkins and the Irene Fountas and stuff, they're still gurus and they're still, you know, have done such a great job. A couple of things, one of the things that was always an issue and that I wonder how much better it is now is that girls seem to be able to read any book, any topic. But we just don't have a lot, we used to not have a lot of books for boys to read. And we didn't, towards the end of my teaching career, it started to become more of an interest for people. And they really focused on what books could we have for boys? And I'm wondering if we take that into consideration at all when we're looking at our books and what they're working on in the classroom.
Yeah, I think we absolutely do. And in the frameworks, there's a huge emphasis on nonfiction, that at least 50% of the reading should be nonfiction. And so we've actually this year purchased some bookroom leveled texts. And we purchased nonfiction texts for the bookroom because currently we have Houghton Mifflin and there isn't a lot of nonfiction within that. And also, it's very intriguing for our boys and even the girls to read about nonfiction topics. So we are continuing to work on building our bookrooms. And of course, that takes funding and time to do that. But we do consider that. And we always consider what are the hot topics amongst the kids and so that we can make good book choices when we're making purchases.
And when you were talking about the workshop model, and I had put aside that one, how much time is allotted each day? Because I know with the new math program we've just instituted this year, that's taken up a little chunk that used, not used to be for math. There's two math sessions. And so I'm wondering if the reading has taken a little hit or how have we worked that in?
Well, so our literacy block is 90 minutes. And we're working on having that be throughout K, or one to five. Kindergarten's slightly different with, they have a slightly shorter day. In first grade where there's foundations, they've actually been given an extra 20 to 30 minutes of time. So their literacy block is actually two hours, which is nice. And our district literacy plan recommends eventually getting to two hours, which would be a luxury to be able to teach reading and writing for the amount of time that it really needs to be taught well. But for now, we have 90 minutes and we can work within that until we're able to shift to a solid two-hour literacy block.
Okay, another one was which grades? When you're talking about the readers workshop and the Just Write books and the independence, that can't be all the grades, is it?
It is K through five, yes.
That's what I meant, it's K through five.
Oh, yes, K through five, yep, this is elementary.
Excellent. And I think that might be it. Oh, my last thing was what does this look like in our system when you were talking about the professional development for the teachers? That I totally agree with you. We definitely, if we're going to say we're going to do it, we need to do it right. And I think that the superintendent obviously makes so many things available that I'm glad to see that this would be something that you're encouraging and would have the ability for the teachers to be able to have the workshops and whatever guidance they need in teaching this. Because sometimes people think, well, it's just reading.
Yeah, well, it's the most important thing. I think, you know, we would like a multi-layered approach to the professional development. One is having coaches like me in the district who are in-house, who can support teachers on a daily basis and be, be there whenever teachers need them. And also, to have an outside consulting firm come in who can provide us more feet on the ground and they're highly trained in the workshop model. And having teachers make the huge shift that we're really making from using a prescribed program like Houghton Mifflin to this new framework and model of instruction. And having that consulting firm in for a sustained period of time to really help us make the transition. But in the meantime, training coaches like me so that when they're gone, we still have this ongoing professional development to support our teachers. Because this is a huge shift and they're going to need a lot of support as we move through this process.
And as I look at this, I say again in my mind that science and social studies, where are they? Where do we have time for them? Because the kids are leaving for phys ed and they're leaving for health and we're going to add that to the curriculum. I'm hoping that when you do look at the nonfiction books, that you really focus on those two topics for nonfiction. So that even though it's not specifically in there, it's definitely their learning.
Right. And adding that content-specific material to the literacy block is certainly something that we need to do. And we need to continue looking to find materials to support that as well.
Great, I'm really excited, this is very.
It's very exciting. I think all the members of the district literacy plan are very excited about the direction literacy is moving in within the district. And teachers are getting very excited about it. And principals are talking about it with their staff and kind of building that buzz. So everyone's ready to go and in the fall. And we're just needing the, the support and the PD for teachers.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Our next item of business is going to be the FY17 superintendent's preliminary budget.
Good day, thanks for coming.
Just for a second, if you could indulge me one, I guess, privilege here. I just wanted to introduce folks because I see her out in the audience. And you may not have known her. And so I want to put a name to the face. But sitting behind us to the right is Kendall Vaughn. And Kendall is the Energizer Bunny behind our Wilmington Supports Recovery effort. It's not very often that superintendents get somebody from the community to come up and say, I want to do this, I want to support all of your efforts with what you're doing around substance abuse prevention. And I'd like to, you know, launch my support of this endeavor to do a holiday drive for individuals and families who are struggling with addiction and are, you know, transitioning into, you know, rehab and stabilization facilities and being able to do this. And it was really, she's done it all. She's given us the credit in some ways. But I really feel like it's necessary to give the credit back to her because she's really been doing all the work for us. So I just wanted to thank her because she's sitting here, not sure why, her kids are out here about. So I just wanted to acknowledge her and say thank you publicly.
Great, thank you.
And don't forget to bring your toiletries and your games and your coats and your new clothes with you to any of the concerts you're attending over the next couple of weeks because we have collection boxes at the middle school, at the high school. So ready to receive anything as well as the town hall and the library and I think the Methodist church and all sorts of places around town. So not just you, but all those in the public as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the.
There was a good article, I think there was an article, an article in the paper about, about your efforts. You had sent us an article about it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really, really generous of you with your time and everything and compassionate. It sounds really great, thank you.
Onto budget. So as you know, this time of year in our budget calendar is when we present to you a preliminary budget. It is preliminary because we still have yet to have any extensive discussion with the folks in town, the town manager, assistant town manager, town accountant, with regard to our position, our revenue position. And obviously, revenues, availability of revenues is a critical factor when we're determining what we can, what we can put forth as a sustainable budget. But I think it's important to continue to remind all of us, as well as those in Wilmington who pay taxes to us, exactly what it is that we're seeking to achieve here at Wilmington Public Schools. And as you know, we spent a lot of time over the last year collecting input and developing a vision that I think is a very strong statement about where we want to see our district going. We want to be a high-performing district. And we want to make sure that all of our students have the opportunity to learn, that they have high-quality rigorous curriculum, that they receive engaging personalized instruction, and that it's delivered in a safe, supportive, and inclusive environment. And these are all very important to us. This vision drives our strategic plan. And the strategic plan and strategic priorities that are in that plan drive the things that we're asking for, for resources this year. Our mission is to provide a challenging, relevant, personalized educational experience that promotes academic success as well as social and emotional well-being. So we're really focused here on educating the whole child, academic and non-academic side of the house. And obviously, a key piece of that, and as you heard today in our literacy presentation, is about having well-trained, highly qualified staff that are able to provide students with multiple ways to demonstrate learning and growth and prepare them for their future success. So professional development is a key aspect to the work that we are looking to do and the funding that we're requesting. These are our strategic objectives as identified in our strategy for improvement of student outcomes, developing our learning leaders, not just district-level, school-level administrators, but even building that capacity at the teacher level and building that capacity for leadership throughout all of our schools. And tapping into that leadership to facilitate a collective commitment to continuous improvement and to sharing professional practice with one another. We're looking to ensure equity as well as excellence through our curriculum, through our instructional practices, and also through making sure that educators have the knowledge and skills that they need to support our students. Creating safe and supportive schools. Again, we talk about safety, physical safety. We talk about support, behavioral support, social, emotional support, and inclusiveness so that all students again have access to the least restrictive environment. And achieving operational effectiveness so that we ensure that the resources that we do have are targeted at our goals and that they're used in an efficient and sustainable manner. As you know, our budgets are driven by revenues. And we have available revenues in town. Most of our revenue comes obviously from the revenues generated from the town of Wilmington. About 96% of our revenues that fund the school budget come from town revenue sources. Only about 4% come from grants and revolving funds that are under the school committee's control, if you will. Property taxes and new growth being the largest share of revenues that we receive. These are the other categories as well. The second largest are intergovernmental revenues, predominantly chapter 70 and general government aid that comes from the state. And the third largest source is excise tax. You can see in the next slide, this is what the trend has looked like with municipal revenue sources. So you can see, as I mentioned, that this property tax is the largest share right here. And pretty healthy position from a tax revenue. Last couple of years, 4.2 to 4.4% growth. So that's property tax, which you know, because of Proposition 2 and 1/2, can go up 2 and 1/2%, but it also includes new growth. And there's been a lot of good growth and development happening in Wilmington. As I mentioned, the second largest share is the state aid. And even that has been trending positively for Wilmington. What is interesting to note is that there have been some, a trend, a pattern of declining, increased number of declining revenue categories. So for example, in FY13, you see that there are three categories with declining revenues. That increases to five in FY14. And that increased to seven in 2015, FY15. And one of them that took a big hit, as you can see here, is charges for services. I don't have an explanation for you, but I know that the town manager has expressed a willingness to come to speak to the school committee about revenues in general, as well as some of the major budget drivers on the town side, such as health insurance expenses in the future. We are very healthy in terms of finances in our community. You can tell that the town has done a lot of work over the last 10 years to build its free cash position. So you can see 10 years ago, we were at about 4.3 million, which represented about 6.8% of the total budget amount. And now we're up to 14, almost 14 and 1/2 million, which represents 15% of the total budget. Folks will tell you that in order for a town, a. Folks will tell you that in order for a town, a community to sustain a healthy bond rating, they're typically looking, they, for you to have a free cash position of about ten percent of revenue. So we're above that, which again provides us with a strong bond rating. And when you do the type of borrowing that, that we do to finance projects, obviously that bond rating is important. So being in a healthy free cash position is, is obviously very, very beneficial to us as a community. This is our preliminary budget summary for FY seventeen and we've included the last three years of actual expenditures, so thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, the budget that was adopted for FY sixteen and our preliminary budget request. And you can see that right now at this preliminary stage, we are at a little over two million dollars as a proposed increase, which represents five point seven five percent. In percentage terms, it looks like the growth is here in non-salary, but obviously when you look at the dollar amount, it's really the salary growth that's driving that increase, that makes up the larger share of that increase. And in terms of how we got to this preliminary budget summary, back in October, we sent out budget forms to all of the school leaders, department heads, and they put together their individual budget requests. They send that, all that information to Mr. Regiro, who produces a very thick binder that you can see in front of him right there with all of the requests and all of the backup that goes with the requests. We ask our budget managers to provide us justification, as much data as possible to help defend the requests that they're making. So it doesn't mean that everything that was asked for made it into this preliminary budget and we'll go through some of what made it in and some of what didn't. But that's the first pass is to take everybody's requests that, if we had included everybody's requests, I think we would have been at about eight or percent, give or take. Once we collect all that information, meet with all the budget managers, which is a full day of meetings, then our district leadership team gets together, comes together as a team and we go through a budget prioritization activity that takes up pretty much an entire district leadership team meeting. And together, and I have to give credit to this team because they do a very good job of putting aside their individual building or department hats and looking at the big picture and prioritizing what's going to have the largest impact on students in our district overall, not just advocating for their particular new program or their particular new staff, but what's really going to make the biggest difference overall. Major budget drivers for this year, contractual salary increases over, over a million. So if you look at that total increase, which was two point oh eight million, that's a little more than half of that entire increase. New positions make up three hundred and forty-five, almost three hundred and forty-five thousand of those new dollars. Special education tuition and transportation increases make up a pretty good share of the non-salary expenses. That's the majority of the six hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar increases coming from that category. And then in addition, we have some new spending that we're proposing for curriculum, professional development and other non-salary increases. And here are some of the positions that we are requesting that make up that three hundred and forty-five, almost thousand dollars, which is essentially seven and a half new positions. We spent a lot of time talking about the importance of health education, particularly in the context of substance abuse prevention and in terms of supporting our goal to have healthy children, not just from a physical standpoint, but from an emotional standpoint as well. And identify that we do not provide health education at grade five, which is, in my opinion, a, a pretty significant gap. So the addition of this position would allow us to share a health educator position between the West and the North and be able to fill that gap and provide health education at that grade level, which I think is critical particularly for the transition into middle school. We have no adjustment or guidance counseling staff at the early childhood level and yet we have students who present with some real needs. This is a critical age to begin to address those behaviors and build a solid foundation for social emotional competence. And so we would propose adding an adjustment counselor that again would be shared between the Wildwood and the Beltwell School. As you know, we have a very strong behavioral he- health initiative in place with the Behavioral Health Task Force. I've been spending a good amount of time with that team and there is certainly a lot of work to be done and the Behavioral Health Task Force, I'm sure, would continue to drive a lot of this work, but I think that we should begin to transition and provide leadership in that behavioral health, that key behavioral health area and hire somebody who could continue to implement the plan that has been developed by the Behavioral Health Task Force and be that key implementer for all the different initiatives that have been outlined. At the middle school, we have seen, and Mrs. Gerard is actually here amazingly, she's still standing and she keeps coming back to work every day. She's had quite a year, there are a lot, and her staff as well have had quite a year. We've had a lot of students with some real challenges at the middle school and a lot of it comes back to this behavioral health and social emotional health. I do believe that over time, as we start to implement the supports and the programming necessary to build social competence and to help kids with resilience and to help them with conflict resolution and stress management, that we will see less and less of a problem at the middle school. But that's obviously going to take some amount of years before tho- those children get to, those programs are in place and those children get to the middle school. So we have, I've provided you a lot of data in the preliminary budget memo, but we've had kids that have been referred to community-based acute treatment facilities, hospitalization facilities, just have been hospitalized, transitioned in and out, back and forth into school, a, a significant number. And we feel that it's really important to put together a program specifically to address those social emotional needs. This would not just be for students who might be on an IEP for emotional impairment. This would even help to address the needs and that's why you have both general ed and special ed and social worker staffing in here because it would also be an appropriate placement on a temporary as needed basis for students who may not have a need to be on a 504 or an IEP for a social emotional issue, but just need those temporary supports to be able to get through some of the trauma that they might be experiencing in their life, get them to the other side and reintegrate them back into the classroom setting. At the Shawshin School, we have, as you know, several programs at the Shawshin School and those programs are staffed by people who have some expertise in, in behavior analysis and behavior interventions, but we would actually like to have a full-time behavioral assistant who would be there to deliver behavioral interventions to the students at the Shawshin. We spend, I shouldn't say we, it's not me, but the principal and the assistant principal and staff in the school who are trained in de-escalation and physical restraint. They spend a good amount of time trying to de-escalate the behaviors of these children and there just aren't enough hands. And when a principal is taking, you know, half a day to be the one who is there, then obviously there's a need for some staffing to support that. So that's the proposal for the Shawshin. At the Beltwell, we have a shared staff, special education staff between the Beltwell and the Wildwood. And so this would provide some support for particular, particularly in those classes where that staff member's not there because they're at the opposite school. The ELL teacher, I know Sue McDonald was here a few weeks ago and she talked about the increasing numbers of students that we're having, that are coming to Wilmington Public Schools as ELL students. We have even more students, I think two more students came since, came into the district since she gave the presentation. And so, you know, we are required to provide services and we are required to provide a certain level of services. We have one point five FTEs that are addressing the needs of over thirty students. And with the rotating schedule at the high school and the rotating schedule at the middle school and having eight buildings to be covered, it's next to impossible for them to be able to provide the required level of service with FTE staffing of one point five. This will become a compliance issue in our next coordinated program review if we don't address it now. So this would take us to two point oh FTE for ELL staffing. At the West, we are looking to increase a current art teacher who is at point five to full-time, one point oh. We have some inequities from across buildings in terms of specialist support. So this person would help to address that and, and when they're not actually teaching art, and this, this really applies to all of our specialists and our specialists do a fantastic job. When they're not actually taking a classroom of kids and providing specialist instruction, they are pushing into classrooms and providing academic supports or they are taking intervention groups and providing those instructional supports to students. So they're doing a lot more than just teaching in their area of specialty, which we appreciate. And finally, we have an educational assistant that's a one-to-one with a student in the preschool at the Wildwood. When that student goes to kindergarten because of the longer day, that one-to-one coverage will need to increase. So that fills that extra coverage. We also have some salary reductions, some position salary reductions, not necessarily whole people, but pieces of people. So we've been able to come up with sixty-two thousand dollars in savings to offset that initial cost of four hundred and seven, six ninety-six. So the net impact is seven and a half positions at a total of three hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. These are positions that were requested and not funded. Additional educational assistance for the two integrated preschool programs at both of the early childhood centers. At the Shawshin School, and there's an enrollment bubble, which has created a need for an additional third grade classroom teacher. We plan to address that, we think that we may have an ex, due to enrollment shifts, we may have an extra position at another school that we would transfer to Shawshin so that in the net we wouldn't have to add. So that's how we'll address that. It's not that we're going to let class size go above class size guidelines. Lubin Street, there was a request for an additional special education teacher. We are just not able to fund that. At the middle school, a, we have a point four additional this year, added a point four general music teacher. That was basically, there was not sufficient coverage. We had a teacher who had way more preps than contractually should have had. And so we had to add that point four and there was a request to increase that person to full-time. We're just not able to fund that. There were several world language additions of staffing at the high school in Latin, Italian slash Spanish and a special educator who has a special, specialty in world language, foreign language as well. And also addition to the sign language, we currently have a point six FTE sign language teacher. So this would increase that FTE to point eight. Our plan for the high school, as is the plan for the middle school, is to really take a hard look at the enrollment in all of the sections and where there are classes that are under-enrolled, you know, fifteen or fewer students. We'll, we'll need to ask ourselves the question if those are electives or, that we'll be able to continue to offer or is there a way to collapse sections and still be within the guidelines, the class size guidelines, but not have so many sections that have kids that are under, student enrollment that's under, you know, fifteen, fourteen students. So we'll be taking a hard look at that. There was a request for an additional team chair. Currently, we have three team chairs and the thought of adding a team chair was that we would be able to have a full-time team chair at the high school, a full-time team chair at the middle school and the other two team chairs would split K, the pre-K to five students. One would take one side of town and one would take the other side of town. I still think that's ideal, I still think that's something that we should strive for and if we can find the budget savings, maybe we can do that without requesting additional funding because of the needs, particularly at the high school and the middle school, I think, are substantiate this, this increase in this position. I will say that, that the district that I was in previously, so Reading has more, definitely have more students, about a thousand more students, but a similar number of students on IEPs and placed out of district and they have seven team chairs. So there is a movement towards building based team chairs to provide the level of support necessary and to take the burden off of, because right now what's happening is that when a team chair's not available, it's usually a special education teacher that has to take time away from their caseload to chair meetings or sometimes it's our counseling staff then end up chairing meetings and then they're not available to provide counseling services to students. So I think it's something that as a district, we have to look at a little bit more closely. And finally, there was a request for a technology coordinator. This coordination was more around instructional technology coordination, coordination of technology integration. That's just unfortunately something that we're not able to fund. So three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars worth of positions that we, that were requested but not added to the budget. In terms of non-salary expense increases, these were the things that were included in the budget. So for special education in district and out of district, special education transportation, historically, we have exceeded the budget in this area. So this brings this level of funding up to what historically we have been spending on that item. Regular education transportation, that increase, we have last, starting this, this current year, we have a new contract with North Reading Transportation and has escalators built into it. So this covers that escalation. There is a need for increased home and hospital tutoring services. We talked a little bit about what's happening at the middle school. It's not just happening at the middle school, but students who are not able to get to school or are hospitalized, they're still obviously entitled to make academic progress and we have to provide them with those tutoring services. The need for that has increased and so we've increased that by an item in the budget. Inclusion consultant, as you know, we have an inclusion task force that we've put together who's doing a fantastic job chaired by Mary Hood, who's here, I think, yes, she's still here, and Jen Mahan have co-chairing that. That group is, is working really hard to put together a plan for how we can improve the implementation of our inclusion practices in Wilmington Public Schools. And I think we'll be at a place, starting next year, we'll, we'll be looking to start to implement those inclusive practices. Initially, we were thinking about a full-time inclusion specialist, but given budget constraints, we scaled that back. Given that it'll be sort of the first year of implementation, we would look for more of a consulting model to have somebody provide consulting services. We continue, like to continue with our commitment to developing professional learning communities in the, in the district. That practice, those practices have taken hold and I think really moved the collaboration in our buildings. So we had a training last year for cohort of thirty in June. We'll offer another training this year for similar sized cohort and this will be the fin, the third and final cohort. So about a third of our staff and most of our administrators will have received formalized training in implementing PLCs. And I think that will really help us to be able to work more efficiently and effectively together when we come together to collaborate. Literacy coaching, consulting and professional development, this is what Holly was referring to when she talked about professional development. So we would like to retain the services of a literacy consulting company. They've already met with a couple, with members of the literacy team and administration and been able to narrow it down to one of the leading consultants in the area, a company called Teaching and Learning Alliance. I've actually had the opportunity to speak to other superintendents in the area who have used TLA and they've spoken very highly of them. And the goal here would be basically to have the boots on the ground to provide what Holly referred to, which is that key job embedded professional development where they would be able to get in there and coach teachers on how to implement the different components of the Reader's Writers Workshop model. Obviously, you know, Holly can't do it by herself, she's one person and we got six schools that are, you know, pre-K to five. And so this would allow us to be able to spread that coverage and get this off the ground. We're, we're a little bit behind the eight ball. I think the teachers are really eager and anxious to get going on this. I think they're all ready to probably take the Houghton Mifflin text and throw it out the window and, you know, really engage in this work. So I think it's important to provide that support to them, to allow them, not unlike Envisions. We committed all of our PD time this year to Envisions training. Granted, we can, we can tackle that in, in a year. We'll continue to do more PD around instructional practice for math, but this allows us to kind of have that same push forward. This is not a one-year expense, I warn you, this will be a multi-year expense. So when I come back to you next year with Kate and we say, we need another fifty thousand and you say, didn't we do that last year, this is a multi-year effort. And over the course of three years, hopefully, we will have provided that job embedded coaching and PD to teachers so that they are able to take the practice in one thing. At the high school, there was a request for foreign language textbooks. Foreign language, it's my understanding, is in the curriculum renewal cycle this year. And so there have been lots of discussions about very outdated textbooks for, for, for all three languages, like the Spanish, Spanish, French. for all three languages, like the Spanish, French, and Italian. Yeah. And so this would allow them to get new textbooks that were more up to date. Miscellaneous department supplies and materials. This is everything from, you know, physical education, art, science, all the different supplies and materials that we need to support instruction. We did find some reductions, particularly in the area of computer lease purchase. It's not that we're not investing in our devices. It's that some of that is, you see in the capital plan, so we're providing that. But we've also made a lot of purchases over the last several years, and we're in a good place with respect to our launching of our devices and our infrastructure, obviously due to Mr. Ellis's leadership in this area and his department. Special education out of district tuitions. We actually have seen decreases with respect to tuitions in private-day, private residential placements. We're seeing kids shifting into public collaboratives, which are us. But that, overall, that line item has increased. We have kids that are moving in, as well as some kids that were placed this year in some anticipated placements as well. Electricity, we did budget an extra ten thousand dollars this year for electricity. We didn't know exactly what would be required in this new building. There are more moving parts because of modern ventilation codes. There's more fans, there's more motors. And while the systems that are in place are more, they're more efficient, there's still more moving parts. So this will put us in line with where we think we'll need to be, given the systems here in the new building. And then district-wide curriculum and professional development activities. These are all the different things that you see outlined in the strategic plan for professional development to support the various strategic priorities. It includes things like curriculum mapping to continue to make sure that our curriculum is aligned to the standards, and universal design for learning, and positive behavioral intervention supports. Those are all cornerstones of the multi-tiered system of support that we're implementing. So training in those areas and then support for implementation of those. So in total, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars' worth of non-salary expenses being requested. And here are some items that actually weren't funded. There was a hope that we could perhaps have some funding for some, the interdisciplinary block here at the high school, the also known as the W-two block. And essentially bringing, either bringing folks in from the outside who might command a fee for their services, or paying teachers because right now the way it works is that block is, cannot be, contractually cannot be a prep period. So if they're taking that time and they're having to prep for it, then contractually, we need to pay them for that, compensate them for that time. So we have been very creative. We've been fortunate that we've had some outside partners who literally popped on in the woodwork, recently met with folks from Reading Cooperative Bank who are interested in offering the junior, a junior achievement curriculum around financial literacy, entrepreneurship, managing money, investments. We're willing to volunteer their time to offer that. So we're gonna continue to look for more of those types of partnerships to be able to provide additional enrichment activities to kids during that block if they're so inclined to do that. Also looking to connect with an area college to perhaps offer an early high school-college-type program that could be offered at that time as well. Alternative evening school, it's my understanding that some years ago, there was an alternative evening school program here at the high school. I think it's a great program. I think it's a great idea. There is grant funding available through the state. It is a competitive grant. But our plan is to write the most compelling grant application that we can write and hope that we might be able to fund this through the state's grant program. The literacy coaching and consulting, initially, the request was eighty-six thousand, and we scaled that back to fifty thousand. We still think, you know, fifty thousand is a good amount of money. Some of the work that TLA was going to do for next year, we actually are able to do some of that this year. So that combined with, you know, obviously fifty thousand dollars' worth of coaching and PD, that's a lot in a year. That's probably as much as our staff are gonna be able to take on. So we think that that will get us where we still need to be, even though we shaved it down a little bit. And then curriculum mapping, we initially had a funding for thirty thousand dollars' worth of curriculum mapping. We scaled that back to fifteen thousand. So just a few, fewer teams doing the work. We invested money in the Aspen IMS system to load up our curriculum maps into Aspen. Now that we've made that investment, we really still do need to provide staff with compensation to actually be able to put those maps into the mapper. But we won't get as much done as we had hoped, but we'll just pace it out a little bit more. And that's it for the presentation.
Wow. Do we have any questions? That was very, it's very clearly given. I think it was very.
It would be nice if your first pass gets through the wrong way.
That would be nice.
It doesn't look like, it doesn't look to me like there's anything, anything superfluous. Everything is, I think, well-founded and needed. I actually have a quick question. Can you back to, go back to the salaries?
Yep. Right here.
So this, and then on the next slide, there's a couple of full-time positions that are at sixteen thousand. And I assume these are...
Educational assistant positions at the educational assistant scale.
What, what education level do they possess?
It varies. We have some who are non-degreed. We have some who have a bachelor's degree. We have some who have special certifications. There is a certification, a new certification that we, I don't know if it's new. It's new to us. We became aware of it, called Behavior Technician. So actually, Mary is working to get her, some of her, some of the educational assistants in the district trained. It's something that we would like to offer to more of them who are in classroom settings where they're called upon to manage challenging behaviors.
Yeah, I think that's, if that's the going rate, that's a bargain for that, for that type of person, I would think.
Yeah, I would agree. Sure.
Quick, I was gonna say the same. Steve said, but my question was, what was the actual percentage that we were approved for last year? I think it was a four percent?
Four percent.
All right.
Yeah. We started off at the preliminary stage at, not too far from where we are now, maybe five point three. Five point six, okay. So a little bit higher than that. In terms of next steps, Paul and I are meeting with the town manager, the assistant town manager, the town accountant on Thursday the seventeenth. On, and so we'll have those discussions about revenue assumptions and what they're projecting for available revenues and what they feel is sustainable. We do know that recently, at the Board Selectman meeting, the town manager stated that he's hoping that the overall budget for the town will come in somewhere around three percent. So obviously, if we came in at five point seven five, someone is gonna have to come in a lot lower than that, a real lot lower, since we are the, about half of the budget of the town, give or take, depending on what you include. So we'll have those discussions and then what our hope is, obviously, we'll bring back to you the superintendent's recommended budget for presentation at your January twentieth meeting. It'll be a far more comprehensive budget, a lot more background information that we're developing and will provide to you. And if we can, I think we'll try to see if we can get the town manager to come and talk about revenue assumptions and major budget drivers on the town side. So you have all the pieces that you need to be able to make your decision moving forward.
Yeah, quick follow-up. So if we were asked to scale back, do you have any idea where that's gonna come out of? Do you have some idea?
I have some ideas, but I'd also like to get the input of the leadership team. So on knowing what we know right now and knowing, you know, that the town is thinking it's around three percent, we have a district leadership team meeting on Friday. And so we're gonna spend another part of that meeting, again, talking about prioritization and looking for some opportunities for further cost savings. And it's important to me that they have the input as well. Like I said, I have some thoughts, and my brain's going about a thousand miles a minute trying to think about how to restructure and reallocate and shave here and shave there to get us everything that we need. So what we did last year and what we'll do again is we've provided the town manager with a step-down analysis. So going from five point seven five to five and a half to five and a quarter, what would you reduce and what impact would that have on our school district and our, you know, our ability to meet the goals and targets of our strategic plan? So we'll do that again and have a discussion about where we think that balance point and that tipping point might be, where if we dip too far, we really won't be able to make the progress on those strategic priorities that we're looking to make.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was really clear. Okay, our next item of business is the district accountability presentation.
So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Burnham, our accountability expert here. Some of these, some of this is, it's full of all sorts of acronyms, which we love in education, and it's rather, some of these things are rather complex. But I know that Kate's gonna do a great job in sorting through it all so that you can kind of understand what this means for us. Only so that in the future, who knows what happens with accountability?
Exactly. This could be the last time you see this presentation. Okay. So accountability used to be AYP, now is PPI, the Performance and Progress Index. And it really takes into account several parameters. So one of the parameters is this proficiency gap narrowing. And here, all districts or schools and subgroups are expected to have the distance between their performance level of 2011 by 2017. So we're rapidly approaching that endpoint of 2017. Massachusetts uses the one-hundred-point composite performance index, which is CPI, to measure that progress. CPI assigns points in these twenty-five-point increments, either a hundred, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, or zero points. And that applies to students participating in MCAS, MCAS ALT, those districts that would have opted for PARK instead of MCAS, again, to monitor the student progress toward proficiency in advance. And then ultimately, CPI is calculated by dividing the total number of points awarded to all of the students by the number of students in any given group, whether we're looking at whole schools, subgroups, et cetera. So there's an annual PPI, and that is essentially a measure of improvement over a two-year period based on seven different indicators. You've got three, the narrowing of proficiency gaps in ELA math and science, growth in ELA and mathematics, and then an annual dropout rate and cohort graduation rate. And of course, those two really only apply to our high school. The annual PPI is calculated for all groups that assessed a sufficient number of students in ELA math in the most recent year and at least one of two prior years. And that number is twenty-five for subgroups. So if you don't have a subgroup of twenty-five, there's no report. The group is awarded either zero, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, or a hundred points based on the level of improvement. And again, the annual PPI is the total number of points earned for all indicators divided by the number of indicators. And again, the high school would have all seven indicators, whereas our other schools would not have those last two indicators. Then there's a cumulative PPI, because we love PPI. And again, this applies to all district schools and groups with sufficient data. This is a point system that's, again, that's zero to a hundred, and it looks at the last three annual PPIs. That's how we get the cumulative PPI. So it's an average over the four years, and there's a weighting so that the PPI of the current year is weighted more heavily. And as you go out and go back to retrieve data, three years, two years, one year, it, the weighting for the furthest data away from the current time is weighted less. So for a school to be considered to be making progress toward narrowing proficiency gaps, the cumulative PPI for both the all-students group and the high-needs students group has to hit that magic target of seventy-five or higher. Then you also get points for growth. So PPI points are awarded such that, you know, if you have the hundred points, you're rated as above target. And in order to get that rating, you have to have a median SGP higher than sixty. If your median SGP is somewhere in a range of thirty-one to forty, you're rated at no change, and that's the equivalent of a twenty-five-point assignment. So here we are. So in your report that's in your packet, you have the detailed reporting that's provided by the Department of Ed. What I've done is taken the parameters that you find across all schools. That would be the ELA all-students, ELA high-needs, math all-students, math high-needs, science all, and science high-needs in terms of the gap narrowing measure, the growth measure. And then we get extra credit, bonus points. We like bonus points. We get extra credit for moving students out of the warning category. In order to get the credit, though, you have to move at least ten percent out. We also get extra credit for moving more students, again, at least the ten percent, into advanced. So we think it's important to show the bonus points that we get towards our PPI. So here's the district as a whole. So you'll note that the things that are really good are in green and things that aren't, aren't so good are in red. And you'll see that there's some yellow or no color, and that's really nothing, nothing to be too alarmed about. But we obviously want to see the most green on the screen that we can. So this is the district as a whole. We're a little bit concerned. We see that we've lost ground moving towards hitting targets in our high-needs subgroup in science overall. We didn't get too many bonus points as a district, but we'll take a look school by school. So the Woburn Street School, Level Two, saw some decline towards reaching those targets in ELA for all students and high-needs. But happily, we actually hit above target and hit our target in math. And we got some extra credit for moving students out of warning in math in our high-needs subgroup, as well as moving more students into advanced for our high-needs ELA and our math as well. The Shawshin, also Level Two, had a rough year. But sometimes when you take risks and you try to do new things to make a difference, you push on some things and then other things maybe have an unintended outcome. So we saw some decline in terms of staying on target with hitting our goals, our targets as defined by the Department of Ed in ELA and math for both all students and our high-needs. We did get some bonus points, though. The North, lots of green at the North. Again, we're seeing that there's some decline in science, but I think that that's pretty understandable, given that the last several years, the district has been really focused on trying to improve outcomes in math and ELA. Lots of bonus points over at the North. The West, we're improving. We're improving below target. And then we, for our growth measures, hit targets or scored above our target and also got some bonus points. And again, you see a little bit of a decline here in terms of science. Middle School, we're largely improving. We might be improving below target or seeing no change, but we're also seeing on-target for our ELA high-needs group, and we're seeing great numbers of bonus points over there in the column for moving students into advanced, which is great. And then the high school is our only Level 1 school in the district. Again, it's great to see that we have our subgroups and all students hitting above target in ELA. We're on-target for math, although we see a slight decline against our targets for math in the high-needs group, and again, seeing a decline in our science. But again, growth is good, and we got extra credit points for moving students out of warning, so, as well as some students into advanced. Again, the issue is the performance of the district is pretty steady. We're very consistent in a big picture. The problem is, is that the targets that are set for us by the Department of Ed, they climb every year, so a consistent performance over time just widens the deficit a bit for us. So the summary is, at the moment, we're not on track to meet the district target for 2017. Who knows if that district target for 2017 will be in play a year from now? We can say that, you know, we're seeing great strides in moving students either into the advanced category or out-of-warning categories. Last year, we talked to you about a couple of points that were of particular interest, where we perhaps saw a gap that was greater than 10 CPI points. What you've got highlighted in a green font here, these are things that we brought to our attention last year through this report, and these are highlighted in green because we've made some gains. So yes, we're still 9.1 CPI points below target in math over at the West for our high-needs group, but we've made gains against the 19.1 that we reported last year. Same is true for our Students with Disabilities subgroup at the West. We've made some improvement there. Unfortunately, the items highlighted in red here, we've made a little bit further decline in these areas, rather than closing some of these gaps. And a few things new this year, based on this year's report. The West, our high-needs subgroup, is 15.2 CPI points below target in science. I mean, this is really just a translation from the color-coded grid that you saw earlier. Same is true for North, all-students subgroup is 11.8 CPI points below target. The Shawshene high-needs group is 25.2 CPI points below target in math. Shawshene all-students subgroup is 11 CPI points below target in math. And we're going to continue to focus on closing that gap. This data is all-new. It's just been released publicly today. So this data, along with the data that we presented last month with our MCAS performance and growth and our own district assessment data, this is just additional data that we'll be looking at, at the building level, at the classroom level, to do what we can to personalize instruction and close gaps for our students.
Questions? Does anyone have any questions? I just had one comment. It appeared from all of the, you gave us all this extra information, which is really excellent, but when I'm reading through it, I'm thinking, in some cases, we're only talking one or two students who didn't make it.
Right.
I think people, I don't want people to get the impression that this is vast amount of students across the curriculum. It's very few students in some cases.
True, very true.
And so I think, not to make it sound, you know, it's okay that we didn't make it, but we can't panic.
Right, there's a context for all the data that we look at.
Yes.
And knowing the context helps us know how to utilize this data.
Exactly.
It's, this is just one additional data point to a larger data story, where we see successes with some data points. We all, then we turn and we see, oh, not so much success with a different data point, all in the same building. But this information is helpful when you, at the building level, know where you put your time, effort, and your resources, and you look at the data and you can say, great, all our efforts were rewarded, because on this data point that we tried to target and move, we did. Sometimes when you push hard in one direction, sometimes you might drop in another direction. Again, it's a fine balancing act, and it's information. It's just one data point.
All right. Excellent, thank you. Anyone ever have any? Thank you very much, that was an excellent report.
Quiz tomorrow on ASAM.
I'm the not-on-target person on that quiz. Okay, oh, this'll be interesting. MCAS versus PARK vote.
So I provided the committee with a memo about assessment in general. As you all know, on November 17th, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted to transition to a new standardized assessment system, which is being referred to these days as MCAS 2.0. You know, it was in October that the commissioner began to reveal this, what he called door number three initially, this alternate means of getting us from PARK to MCAS or MCAS to PARK. And we still don't necessarily know a whole lot, although I did just recently read something from the DESE, that the commissioner's office pushed out, that reiterated the feeling that the future MCAS 2.0 will be significantly based on the PARK assessment, but will include elements that are specific to Massachusetts, to address Massachusetts standards. So this, as you know, is basically a year away, spring of 2017 is what the timeline anticipated timeline in, is, there certainly is a lot of work to be done, not the least of which is actually issuing, developing the procurement docs, documents, and issuing procurement for a vendor to potentially replace measured progress, replace Pearson, and come up with, or could be one of those, to come up with the assessment. Once they identify and award a contract to that vendor, then there's a lot of work to be done to actually develop that assessment. So it certainly is an aggressive timeline to get us to a place where, by the spring of 2017, we're administering this new system. The other thing is that there is a commitment on the behalf of the commissioner and the department to transition us towards computer-based testing, so that by 2019, we are 100% administering computer-based testing, and paper and pencil options will no longer be available to us if that plan is implemented as it's expected. So I've provided you with a little bit of history by way of background in the history of MCAS, as you know, it was part of the Education Reform Act. First started being administered in 1998, and then after we had the passage of NCLB, it expanded the testing from just the grades we were testing to 3 through 8. And then in Massachusetts, we have the competency determination, which requires that students also pass the 10th grade MCAS in ELA math and science. So that's where we stand right now. The question that remains, obviously, for folks is, okay, so now what are we going to do in 2016? And there was a lot of speculation about what direction that might head, and in the end, what the commissioner has recommended and what the board has adopted as a plan is that they're going to give flexibility to the districts. Those districts that administered PARK last year actually do not have flexibility. They have to administer PARK. They have a choice about paper and pen versus, paper and pencil versus computer, but they have to administer PARK. They will continue, though, to receive the protections of hold harmless that they received last year, and what that means is, from an accountability perspective, their accountability level can remain the same or increase, but if it were to have gone down because of their results, they would not, they would drop their accountability level. They, the districts that administered MCAS last year are given the choice, and that's where we stand. So we gave MCAS last year, administered MCAS, we have a choice of whether we want to administer MCAS or PARK. If we chose to administer PARK, hold harmless would be extended to us for our 2016 results. Documented for all of you what my feeling is and my recommendation, and it's not just my recommendation, obviously, I've had conversations with district administrators, school administrators, and as I wander through the hallways of our schools, have done some impromptu surveys of teachers, and I think, you know, pretty universally, everybody supports the recommendation that I'm making, which is that we remain with MCAS for spring of 2016. I've talked about some of the reasons why. I think that one of the big reasons is just the unknown and not knowing what that assessment looks like, and to shift our students from MCAS to something that is not really going to be the final assessment, and then to the final assessment, to me, it seems that we should stick with what it is we know, what we have known. We've invested a lot of resources in developing the capacity of our administrators and teachers to dive into MCAS data on an annual basis, and to use that information to help guide curriculum and guide instruction and guide professional development. And switching to PARK, we've already learned that there's some uncertainty about what kinds of reports would be available and what form, and I don't know that we would be able to have that same, engage in that same activity come next year with PARK results that we would be able to do with MCAS results. So for those reasons and the others that I outlined in the memo to you, that would be my recommendation. MASSS and MASCE are recommending that this be, because of its level of kind of heightened awareness, and that this, again, be something that school committees weigh in on. So with that said, I, you know, there's a recommended motion here in terms of whether or not you choose to support the recommendation that I'm making to administer MCAS in 2016.
You know what I think we'll do? We'll do the motion first, then we'll know what we're talking about and see if anyone has anything they want to say about the motion. So it's on the third page of our report, down at the very bottom. I would accept a motion that the Wilmington Public Schools elect to administer the MCAS to Wilmington students in the spring of 2016, and that the superintendent transmit this decision to the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education on behalf of the Wilmington School Committee. Mr. Bjork.
I'll offer that as a motion.
Do we have a second, Mrs. Carroll? Okay. All those in favor? Oh, wait a minute. Oh, yeah. We want to discuss first. Okay, we'll discuss. Okay, so does anyone have any reaction they want to make?
I think Mary covered it very well.
We have, we have quite a lengthy report here, and we have the details in the back, and so we really have seen a lot of what this is.
Yeah, there's a, what I've included for you is a document that was a table, that was part of a report that was actually commissioned by the Secretary of Education, Secretary Pfizer. It was done by an independent research organization, and they sort of weighed in on the whole PARK, MCAS, and this is, it was a nice table that sort of shows the differences between the current MCAS and PARK, and I thought it would be helpful for you all to see what the, what those differences are.
Well, and we had quite a discussion last year when we had to decide. That was the really, to me, that was the hard time.
We made the move that we did last year.
I am too. And the, yes?
For PARK, how is the special needs? Is it easier than MCAS, or is it? Do you want to offer any?
Since you're here.
The combinations are slightly different for students with special needs. They're structured differently. There are some combinations that are offered to all students that weren't, and they're in a different structure.
The online piece is more challenging for some of our high-needs students, who may not be comfortable with changing screens on the computer, changing, swapping back and forth on computer screens while they tested, which can increase anxiety, but we, there, we're working towards managing that. Other than that, you know, the rigor of the questions is pretty high, and it'll be challenging.
I see struggling in high needs, and I was just wondering, how's that, you know, get off or no?
On pages, labeled as page 40 of the table, but item number 15, there's a comparison of unaccessibility for current MCAS and PARK. The one somewhat unresolved issue is that there is no MCAS-Alt associated with PARK. There is no PARK-Alt, so that is a question mark. And if we were had, if we were to have administered PARK this year, we would still have had MCAS-Alt for those students who wouldn't have taken MCAS nor would take PARK, because there is no PARK equivalent of that. In addition, there is no PARK science test, so we would have still had given the MCAS science for grades 5, 8, and 10, and because there is no, the competency determination is still based on MCAS through the class of 2000, until the class of 2019, we would have given MCAS at the high school. So if we had gone with, if we went with PARK, we'd be giving part PARK, part MCAS. I'm sure we would have put our administrators right over the edge. And probably Neil as well.
Okay. Mrs. President?
The devil we know, from a, we know what to expect, and if we have another year to go with what we know, then that would be my thought pattern.
There, you know, there is, I, you know, I will say that, you know, there, there's not, it's not that we don't agree that the assessment needs to evolve to something that better assesses students' ability to not just understand the content, master the content, but to know how to analyze and synthesize and apply. I think we all agree that that is, that's a place where we need to get to, but until there is an assessment tool in place, until there are questions that are released that help us to be able to, to give those to teachers so that they understand what those questions are looking like and how they need to adjust their instructional practice, I think it's December, and this assessment is going to be given in the spring, and to expect them to make those kinds of adjustments at this late stage in the game, I think would have an adverse impact on students, let alone staff.
They'll be absent that day.
That would certainly hurt our accountability.
We have a reason for it. I know, it's difficult, but I think we, I think we're all in agreement. Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Bjork and a second from Mrs. Carroll. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Kim. All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And now we have the polling location discussion.
Again, I did, I included a memo for you, discusses this, and recently, we began to have discussions with the town. This came up, actually, last year, and so I felt it was important to have a dialogue with the town about this, and it was, it stems from concerns that were expressed by the principals and early childhood directors about using the Beltway and the Wildwood as polling locations and sort of the very open access that it provides to voters, and not only voters, I mean, we've all been at polling locations and seen, you know, all sorts of activity happening. And so for the Beltway in particular, where it's right in the belly of the school, and there are three access points outside to get to the classrooms, and people wandering around the building, and at the Wildwood, the bathroom that's accessible from the cafeteria is also a student bathroom, and just all sorts of potential issues, and I hate to think that we have to worry about that in this day and age, but I worry about that in this day and age. And so in the past, I understand, years ago, the polling location was at the high school in the gymnasium, and I think and I think certainly, not sure when that practice shifted. Uh, so we began to have some discussions and as you know, we have an upcoming election, a pri- a, a primary, presidential primary in March and on March first and then we have a rather significant election coming up in November of 2016, presidential election. We expect voter turnout at both of those to be rather significant. I shouldn't say I do, but the town clerk expects that to happen. So, um, you know, I think that everybody's, is supportive, uh, in terms of the staff, at the staff level. Everybody's supportive of transitioning to having the polling location for all precincts. So, both Boutwell and the Wildwood, but also the Town Hall, the third polling location, all consolidated at the high school. I think it's just a matter of what's, and if, what, what can be done from a timing perspective and again, it's December, the election's in March. In order to move polling locations, the clerk has to notify all the registered voters in a certain amount of time. Uh, the town manager would have to get the support of the board selectmen and put that on the agenda, get that approval and then do the notification. So, it doesn't seem likely that this will happen for, um, March first, but certainly could happen for November. So, there are two things that we would like you to consider and deliberate on and, and take action on tonight. One is, is that in light of the fact that we can't move the polling locations for the March first election, I think the best way to be able to comply with our life-threatening allergy policies and guidelines and in terms of not sort of having lunches, being in classrooms because it's problematic from an allergy perspective um, and the concerns we have about voters', um, access to that building is just to not have school at the early childhood level for, uh, March first at the Boutwell and the Wildwood. As you know, preschool and kindergarten are not compulsory in Massachusetts. They're not obligated to have a hundred and eighty days of school. They don't have a hundred and eighty days of school now. They have less than a hundred and eighty days. So, it'd be one more day. And then we would work with the unions to offer that up as a professional development day for the early childhood staff. Certainly are plenty of things that they would love to, uh, you know, engage in professional development around. And the second issue is your support about moving the polling location from the Boutwell and the Wildwood as well as the Town Hall and consolidating it at Wilmington High School. And, uh, it would be in the gymnasium. There certainly would be some savings on the town side because it wouldn't be necessarily one for one, but instead of having to have three sets of poll workers and three sets of, of fleece details, you would only have one set. Granted, there'd be more people because there'd be more traffic here, but it wouldn't be three times as, as much. It would be a little bit less than that. So, they certainly would be, um, it would be easier logistically for them as well. So, I'm sure you probably have some questions about what that might look like and?
Mrs. Brusad.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Um, any concerns about wear and tear on the high school building if we were to agree to have it all moved there?
Um, I mean, the frequency with which elections happen, I, I don't think so. I mean, the, the gym floor, I'm fairly certain that, uh, Mr. Hooper would want to put down the same floor covering that we used during graduation to protect the gym floor. That would be my biggest concern versus, versus hallways.
Just a couple of questions. These, these are a couple of different motions, so we can discuss each separately. We can vote on one and vote and, and discuss the other one if we need to. Um, as far as moving to the polling location to, to the high school, we're just supporting that change. We, we, we can't make that change.
That's correct. You're, you're just supporting that so that when, um, the town manager goes to the board selectmen, he can offer that it is something that the, the, uh, school committee is supportive of.
Okay. Mrs. Bonnich.
I'm just wondering, and this is about moving the polling locations, so it's not like we're voting on it, but, um, for parking.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, it says here you would move the staff to the student parking lot. Where would the students park?
Students would still park there if you recall.
Is it enough for all of them?
Yeah, before we, before we, uh, I mean, uh, up until the point where we opened that parking lot, everybody was parking over there. There's about a hundred and ten, um, s- staff placards that are issued. So, they were all parked over there in numbered spots and that still left several hundred parking spaces for students. The worst thing that might happen is depending on the time of the year, we might have to tell juniors that they couldn't drive if we think that that lot would be too full. But this would be the, where all of the folks that would be voting would park and they would come in the performing arts entrance and transition to the gym.
Oh, go ahead. Mrs. Carroll.
Um, why would they want to change the Town Hall? Do they just want it all in one or?
Yeah, consolidate rather than having to set up, they, when they heard, let's move Boutwell and Wildwood, they said, why don't we move everybody and why don't we consolidate it?
I don't think that would be too many people at one place. They would want to have two places just in case, you know?
Yeah.
Mr. Mullis.
I will personally would be a little concerned of having, especially in November elections, which will probably some sort of polarizing el- election coming up and, um, get a big turnout. Um, I, I'd be a little bit concerned of the, the, the traffic, not just in cars, but people and the waiting and the big lines. I mean, we've seen that on, on, you know, in, in other towns and, and cities where that becomes a problem, um, by moving it all to one location, especially in the, you know, that six, seven o'clock hour where people are getting out of work, all trying to go to vote at the same place. So, that's, that's my, you know, that's my take on that. I just want to get a little more information on that before, uh?
Yeah, one thing that we do plan to do though is, is we changed our professional development calendar around this year because we wanted to front load the invasions training, so we moved our full day P-day, PD day till October. Traditionally, it's been on Election Day and actually there are several districts in the area that I know Kate's been working with that are all trying to a- agree that they'll all have their full day PD day on Election Day. It's a common day to have that and that way, if we want to, um, do things collaboratively, that opens up that opportunity. So, there's a number, so we've always traditionally had our full day CIT day on Election Day. So, we'll revert back to that next year and I anticipate we'll continue to do that. So, there'll be no school, there'll be no students, there'll be staff, but we can house the PD activities. Don't, don't have to be here, but even if they're here, we can still, you know, have a hundred and eight, ten cars parked over there and still have parking here as well as over there for voter, uh, overflow. And I think they'd also plan to use the parking lot off of Wildwood Street as well.
Well, one of the things when we did this, because I was proud of this when we, um, did it the way it is now.
When you moved it from high school to?
Yes. Um, it was said that the two early childhood centers, the reason for, for putting them there is because there would be no school those days and, um, so they wouldn't have to worry about them go- people getting into the school or not because there wasn't going to be school there.
Right. And it would be my preference to not, I mean, to not sort of devalue that school day for them and be able to continue that. I mean, yes, it is non-compulsory, so we have to do, we have to do it, but like to continue that. It's non, kindergarten's not compulsory now, but that doesn't mean that that might not change as well.
Right, yeah. The, um, and the other thing I was concerned about also was, but if you're going to use the CIT day, then to me, that changes how I'm thinking that's good because I was going to ask if you're going to shut down that side of the building so people cannot get in here. You know, how we, we can lock out?
Yes, the, the, the only time, so your municipal election's on Saturdays. So, there'll be here, the election, the, uh, election would be, um, in November, the big election. There are primaries, state primaries that occur in September, though they don't tend to have high voter turnout. So, it would really be the pri- the federal primary, which happens every four years, uh, in March. And so, that would be the one day where you potentially could have sort of heavy voter turnout. What we would, what we're planning to do regardless, uh, you know, if it's a, a state primary or of every four-year presidential primary, we would create some physical separation in the corridor between the cafeteria tables, but other than that, yes, there would be no other access to the building and so they would come in and they would go through between the auditorium and the tables directly to the gym. Obviously, there would also be, um, police presence details to make sure that, in addition to the staff that already work at, you know, are there in the cafeteria during lunch to direct kids. There'd also be additional detail there. So, that would be the one place where we just would have extra measure of caution and it's only for that, you know, hour and a half timeframe that lunch is in session and which also tends to be a low, uh, voter turnout time. It's really their first thing in the morning and in the evening.
Yeah, in the evening.
And if we saw or anticipated a problem, we could always do a delayed opening at the high school to create some space in the morning for voters to turn up.
And the, um, our annual elections will then be at the high school?
They will be. The one on Saturday, yes.
On Saturday, yeah. Okay. That makes it easier if you're running for election to only have one spot you have to go to. Not being selfish, but, no good. Um, so do we have any other? You think you, do you need to think about it more or do you think you're all set? They're all looking. I don't know if we're all set or not.
Oh, we're going to vote on two different motions.
Yeah, we're going to vote, okay. Um, so I would entertain this motion, uh, to cancel school on March first, 2016 for the Boutwell Early Childhood Center and Wildwood Early Childhood Center. Oh, Mrs. Bonnich.
Still moved.
And, Mrs. Carroll, second. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Kim. And the second one is move to support the change in polling locations for all precincts to Wilmington High School. Mr. Bjork.
I'll offer that as a motion.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Brusad. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, four in favor, two opposed, or sta- opposed? Okay, two opposed. Thank you, Kim. All right, so they both passed, but?
Um, if there are specific concerns that you want me to express to the town manager, I'm happy to do that. If you want to send an email or let me know, whatever, I'm happy to bring those back to make sure we're forward.
It's due, it, it really just the November election, I mean, the federal election where, um, you know, you always see the big traffic and the big lines and people waiting hours and hours and, um, you know, you're talking about one polling, one polling place that, that could develop into that.
Here's my own.
Yeah, people may not go. People see a line, they may back away.
Here's my assumption though. We don't, we have, it's not like we're losing, uh, the, um, the voting booths. So, I, I think that for all three locations, we're going to have, uh, have them all in the gym, so?
Yeah, you have the same number of, um, of, um?
You will, but you still have one line funneling in the same door.
It's the check-in.
You know, it's, and, so that?
You have to check in with the ladies.
Well, hopefully we'll have more checking ladies too.
Yeah, if, if there were more check-ins than that.
Well, I mean, we've got, I assume we have the same number of staff that we've had for all three locations. We'll just put them all in.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the town, from the town clerk's perspective, she has a obviously very vested interest in getting voter turnout to be as high as possible. So, where they run those elections, I, I've, I've got to believe that if there are pinch points or logistical issues that might impede voter turnout, which is for them, like, that's their metric of success, right? Voter turnout, that they would, should do everything that's possible to open more doors or have more folks that are checking you in and checking you out for precincts. Um, I would, you know, that's going to be very important to her to make sure.
But we don't have that information right now to be able to make that assumption and to be able to, um, support that. You know, that's more information we would need. How would we actually go about in doing it? So, that's, I, I'm not saying it wouldn't work and I'm not saying I would support it, I wouldn't support it, but at this point, I just, I don't have enough information to go on.
And not only whether they are able to do that, but to make it known to the public that, you know, don't worry, we're going to have, you know, enough people there. Because people will worry about that.
Yeah, there, there is one other change actually that we became, that I wasn't aware of. I, I should, I feel like I should be from a civics perspective, but apparently in Massachusetts and it's done in others, I think most of the states, is they're doing what's called early voting and so for two weeks prior to the actual election, you will be able to go to the Town Hall and vote, um, prior to the actual Election Day and that's new, Secretary of State, just, and that will be in place for next year. I think she said for the November election, correct?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
You, you really could always do that if you just used an absentee ballot.
Right, but this is actually not even, yeah, you don't even. You only have to put a stamp on it.
Yeah.
I think that makes a difference. That's good because what I was thinking was people who have trouble walking or going long distances, this is much more difficult than it would be to be at the other schools to get into it. But if you can go to the Town Hall and get, that makes the whole difference to me.
Yeah, that, my understanding is according to, um, Sharon George is they would have like one or two of the polling booths set up and you have that like two, eleven days, I think she said or something, that you get to go, you can go in and you can do your voting.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I just, like I said, we just learned about it. I didn't realize that Massachusetts had implemented that.
Hmm. All right. Well, we'll be interested to see how this all works out. Thank you. And, um, our last item, SEAM quarterly report.
Yes. As you know, the, the new collaborative, uh, regulations require that SEAM provide to the school committees of each of the member districts their quarterly reports. So, we have included for you the executive director's report from our most recent meeting on, uh, November twenty-fourth.
Do they want to have any questions or comments? Thank you. That is a good report. Um, public comment.
I'd say a couple of things.
Certainly, yeah.
Uh, my name is David Ragsdale. I have, uh, two daughters at the Shawsheen in, uh, first and third grade and a third one coming up to the Boutwell in a couple of years. And, um, I wanted to say one more thing. It's kind of moot now, given the vote, but I wanted to address one thing that, uh, Mrs. Carroll said about, uh, the high needs group in Park and versus MCAS, uh, which is that there are some accommodations in MCAS that were not available on Park, um, specifically individualized reference sheets, uh, for math and graphic organizers for ELA. Part of the problem with being in a consortium that, uh, Massachusetts was outvoted, uh, outvoted for that. But that's not going to be an issue with, uh, with MCAS. Um, I also wanted to just say something quickly on top of what, um, Ms. Burnham was saying about the nature of the accountability system and how we kind of, you know, get, fall a little bit higher, uh, we're a little bit farther behind sometimes even if we're basically being consistent. And, uh, that the accountability system is based on a pretty aggressive goal and it needed to be to get the waiver from AYP in the first place. And so, you know, cutting in half, getting towards, you know, total proficiency for all students becomes in some ways harder and harder to do as you get along because the biggest gains are easiest to make at the beginning and then it's just smaller and smaller groups of students, like the, the marginal differences towards getting those next group of students towards proficiency becomes in some ways harder and harder as you, as you go along. And given the larger context that we're talking about, you know, Massachusetts um, and the general kind of educationally successful state that, that Massachusetts is, um, I think that that's an important part of the context too of, you know, what we're talking about that, again, no reason to panic in, uh, uh, for, for level two schools or for the, how the accountability system is coming out. And lastly, I wanted to commend the superintendent's blog to everyone if they're not, of course, you're already out reading it all.
Yeah.
Because, uh, I think that, at least for me, and I don't know if other parents feel that way, but, uh, I think that that's exactly the kind of communication that is so great to have, uh, just kind of to, to know what's on her mind, uh, on a consistent basis of like, what are the major issues facing our district? And, uh, you know, the two recent posts in particular, I think the one about, uh, letting children fail or not, it wasn't about being honest with children, but it's okay for them to fail. They don't have to be superb at everything right away. And the, uh, what I imagine was, uh, basically the memo that you gave on the assessment, the history of, uh, assessment, uh, which was also very clear and thorough and very accurate, which was really, really delightful. Anyway, so I think everyone should read her blog and, uh, I just wanted also to say thank you for writing it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. Enjoyed having you. Thank you. Okay, um, other reports. Do we have any?
I just, it's not a report, but I reckon, realized that we forgot one donation to accept and that was the, um, School Business Partnership, uh, grant. They actually had their breakfast this morning and gave away several grants and, uh, uh, Mrs. Moran is bringing the check to us in the amount of $2,373.92 for innovative teacher grants this year.
Excellent, thank you. Um, all right. I would entertain a motion to accept the School Business Partnership donation provided in the form of teacher grants in the amount of $2,373.92. Oh, very, very good, thank you. Mrs. Bonnich, second. Mr. Mullis. All those in favor? Unanimous, Kim. Thank you very much to the, um, School Business Partnership. We appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, any, were there any other reports? No. We have started negotiations with the, um, educational assistance. So, we're ahead of time, so that's good, but we have one more meeting before the Christmas season holiday. Okay. Um, correspondence. No correspondence. Future meeting dates and agenda items. Um, in January, we'll be meeting January twentieth and the other meeting will be in January, will be the twenty-fifth, which would be, is it the twenty-fifth?
Actually, he, uh, he just informed us it's February first that he'll be presenting to the board of selectmen.
Oh, okay.
The town manager. The town manager.
So then we'll stick that in there. February 1st will be our meeting. And because we'll have it at the Town Hall and with the town manager's budget presentation. And then on February 10th will be our February 1st. So February 1st, yeah, and then February 10th. We all set? Any other thing? We wish everyone a happy Merry Christmas season and a holiday season. Thank you. Thank you. And we'll, the time's been going by so fast.